Stand other than the leaders.
At present allegiance, we hereby have the United States of America to report those advanced foundation that are in this law that would be just.
Order, regular, public meeting at the local and town board supervisor for Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. The board of supervisors not meeting in the first of second. That's my one of the case. Want to open it up to public comments and citizen comments concerns question for items that are not. First, we have building and zoning. We have discussion around our proposed zoning ordinance amendment to MF three districts and all regulations from the public.
Thank you. So, good evening, I'm Michael Markman, president of BET Investments, the applicant. Our address is two hundred Dryden Road, Drescher, PA, one nine zero two five. The proposed ordinance, we've worked with staff on and generally we're okay. There's just one section that we'd like to comment on where they're supposed to be on the workforce housing piece. After ten years, there's supposed to be an evaluation of it, and it says for more or less units. And more or less, we've kind of, more or less, we've kind of worked on this with staff. And actually, if in ten years it became more units, as I wrote to Jamie via email, these projects are very, very expensive to build. We were able to, you know, kind of work our pro forma with what we had proposed for the workforce housing units. But if it increased after ten years, I just don't know where the project would be. So, you know, for more would be problematic for us, and I'm more than happy to discuss that. But because I'm counting on kind of complying with it for the next ten years for what we agreed to. But if it went up after ten years, I'd have an issue, so.
Need some more?
Right. Okay, so your feeling is that, well, I guess the question is if I brought it in, I said, well, they're not leasing up, so potentially, you know, nobody's taking them, and that's the only reason I come in. If it needed less, could the board then come back and say, well, we think you actually need more? Because it says more or less.
And I'm sure that talk about what would happen if you needed that. And the board felt we needed more, but you're asking for less, but I would assume you would only come in.
If they were empty, like if for some reason, nobody wanted those units, that's all.
I would not want to make the developers' argument worthy developer.
All right, I'll let my attorney, I mean, I guess that's the problem. I guess we can request it, but then the way the language reads, and I guess I'm an attorney, so I'm going to interpret it. Yeah, potentially, you could, you could raise the amount of required units.
I see potential enforcement issues. Wire war once a project is built, that since you become a non-conforming use.
I guess the issue, though, if you say, okay, well, you have, you know, X amount of units, you have to make, you know, another 10% affordable at that point. If I came in and said potentially, you know, they're not leasing up, there's nobody in them, we would want less, and they, you know, for some reason, the board could say, well, actually, we think you should have more. That's my, that's my concern, that's all.
And you would say, I assume, no, we don't think we need them.
Right, right. I'm going to defer to my attorney, do you have any comments on?
You know, where does it, where does it end, right? I mean, then, then what's the result of that? Is it in the discretion of the board to then make the final decision? I think that's the, the concern. And again, you know, once this project's built, it only has a certain amount of units. It's not like additional units could be built to, you know, even out the affordable units. So, that's our only concern.
To me, that's like changing the density at requiring and after the projects, you know, reducing the density. Township couldn't do that, if you understand. You know, you have certain rights because you've already built the project. To me, it's precisely the same, nice to talk about, but I don't know how it will be.
Just rereading the language, just see if there's any kind of.
Could you just say, could you just take out more or less? And just say that you'll each, you know, in ten years, you'll come back and discuss the workforce units?
The need for workforce housing units. Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's exactly what the language was prior. I think Mr. Kennedy had that exact language, and I'm not sure who added additional or fewer.
It then, well, the version we got had fewer, didn't have additional, just had fewer.
Oh, okay.
Or last, I think it was last, I think it was the last.
Took both out with it, that would be fine, the need for workforce housing units. If that's acceptable. Yes.
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
With that, that's our only comment on the ordinance, so, thank you.
Right, and at this point, if the board is satisfied, if you don't have any more questions, if the board's satisfied, we would like to move this forward, set a hearing date, hopefully with regard to the amendment, and send it out to the county planning commission and the township planning commission for review, in addition to the MAP amendment as well.
Yeah, so, just a pointed note for the board, we had printed copies of the ordinance. Oh, there's over there, yeah, yeah. So, you know, this ordinance has gone back and forth amongst staff, and last night, we had our building and zoning subcommittee, and they offered additional comments that we thought were important to include. So, in this version, which is a little different than when, what went out in the packet, it shows the changes that came about from, the proposed changes that came about from last night's meeting, they've been provided to Mr. Markman, and he was here to discuss anything, and he doesn't have any comments. They were pretty minor, little cleanup, little clarification items, but they're outlined, but you'll see them in the track changes in there. But overall, this, you know, you're familiar, this is a proposed ordinance to create this mixed-use development in the MF three district by conditional use, and then this set the parameters, dimensional parameters, parking, and then just odds and ends like signage and things of that nature. So, the plan would be then for the board to make a recommendation this evening to move this proposed ordinance through the process, which would include the review process that's required, and then eventual authorization to advertise it when it's ready to go. So, the hearing that we would be shooting for would be the second meeting in November, but that will depend on what feedback we get from the planning commission.
Correct, and the county planning commission.
Yes.
We just wanted to make sure that it would be, hopefully, after tonight, it would be in the format to send to the planning commission and the township planning commission.
Yes, that's our, that's our.
Perfect.
Yes, that would be the only change from this evening, right?
I have a question also. In the setbacks, it looks like, so this is applying to a minimum lot size of 20 acres, and the front yard shall, shall not be less than 50 feet in depth. That seems shallow to me for a front setback. If the plan is to put one of the, you know, five-story buildings 50 feet from the frontage, that will not be acceptable, I think.
So, a couple of things, it's by conditional use, so we'd have to show a plan, and we have no intention, the, where the, this tall building is supposed to go back, where the, if you're looking at the property, the right-hand existing office building is going, so we have to come back with a plan, and we have to come back for conditional use. And at that point, if you're not happy with the placement of the building, but we have no intention of building, you know, the tall building on the road, that's just for one-story retail, so.
Is there some reason we have to stick with 50 feet in this document?
The point of having 50 feet is so that the retail could, you know, potentially be visible from the road, the one-story retail, so, because retailers want to be seen from the road.
Okay, but the rest of Norristown has very deep setbacks, and so if we then go under the bridge, under 309, and all of a sudden, there's a completely different aesthetic there, I think that is not pleasing, you know, compatible to the rest of how the Norristown setbacks are. I think 50 feet, in my opinion, 50 feet is too small a setback.
Yeah, so, unfort, I mean, unfortunately, when you start moving the retail buildings further back, and we're already dealing with the hill going up, it's going to be very challenging to be able to build any retail there, because if you go with the hill going up, you're kind of taking away some of the visibility, and then if you move it back past 50 feet, it's just not going to be visible from the road, and none of the other properties on that portion of Norristown Road are retail. And we're trying to do a mixed-use development, because the apartments and the retail tend to go together well, so that, that's the point of having it 50 feet.
I get it, you want people to see the building, but, you know, if folks know there are retail sites there, they'll pull in whether or not they can see them from the road or not. I think there are other developments in the area that have, that are not visible from the main roads, yet there are successful businesses.
Well, I think also, the, as you're aware, the country club is, the golf club is in the back there, and we've had discussion with them with regard to a certain setback that we agreed to adhere to with them, so we need to honor that as well. And I think when you're talking about frontage, isn't there a home that was just constructed? That's, that's got to be.
That's a residential building, that's not a commercial building.
But these are going to be one-story, very aesthetically pleasing retail buildings that would be in the front. The, the higher building, the multifamily apartment building would be setback much further than that, so you would see something that looks similar to a residential dwelling.
So, the one-story retail buildings we're going to see from the street as we drive along are, their fronts are going to be facing Norristown. They're going to be a one-story tall, and that's what we'll see.
Potentially, potentially. One thing, we have to kind of work on our plan and bring it back in front of you, and you have to approve it. So, the, the one thing we do know, as far as the apartment building, that's going to be towards the rear, and it's going to be, as shown, as far as the retail, we have to figure out what users are interested, and we have to figure out the best configuration of it, and we've talked to John Kennedy a lot about kind of the different restrictions we have. So, for the most part, you have to have an aesthetically pleasing building, and you, you're going to have an ability to see it, you're going to have ability to approve it or not approve it during conditional use and site plan approval. So, it's just, we just need, we, for me being able to lease retail, I've been a retailer since nineteen ninety-three for thirty-three years, I just need to have some visibility, because otherwise, I can't get retailers to kind of buy into my site. And for me, the mixed-use, the apartments having places to shop and to eat, it's important, it makes the apartment and the mixed-use kind of work together, as well as the, the office building, for Katie, who's there, we're working on renewing, would like to see some retail there as well. And I just know if I move it further back, I'm going to be really challenged to be able to lease the retail, so.
All right, no further comments.
In the room to make a motion. All right. Do advertise them as free. There a second?
Aye.
Close.
As I've mentioned before, I'm recused from, any issues with the E T?
I'm abstaining.
The three months.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. And. Next up. Our budget overview.
Yeah, I attached the memo when we were doing our budget process this year, we realized that there were, our chart of accounts had grown very large, and our departments had grown very large, so we reviewed it, and following the second-class township code, we realized that we could pull some accounts together, merge them together. That way, with the merge, you're comparing apples to apples, if you look back, by the way, and also like bring, highway was in 430, we had public works kind of split up in different departments, and it wasn't very good for analysis purposes, so we kind of pushed those all together in the example that I gave you, so they're all in department 430 now. It's easier to look at each fund, follow the flow, and analyze the data better, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention now, before we go through the whole budgeting process, so that you could see it, in case you had any questions.
Questions? Can you walk us through a little? Good one.
Yeah, so, on the left there, that was the prior, all the different departments we had, just in the general fund. And basically, what we did was, instead of having 429 and 430 and 431, 432, you see the ones in the blue, we just grouped those all into 01430, and we could merge a lot of the accounts, because the account names were the same, and they were, they had the same, like invoices and things in them, so we grouped all of those. We did the same with planning and zoning, and we kind of merged the legislative and the law into the executive.
So, when we see the budgeting requests and we go through the process, will things still be broken down by, I understand they'll be accounted for differently, right? Like, snow removals, X.
Oh, yes, yes, so in other words, yes, it's not like we're taking away an account that you're never going to see again. We might have had, we broke up office supplies in, into all the different departments, and that was, that didn't work for me, because it's much better to look at office supplies in total of what you're getting for the whole building, to see whether you can buy anything in bulk, or whether you're spending too much on a particular item, and instead of having to go through all those different accounts. So, we grouped those all into one.
But, but there is more consolidation, so where there used to be things like snow removal supplies, and road patching supplies, and drainage supplies, and just like, and then there'd be like different accounts for what are contracted services, basically, we have merged those together right now, because they, it was just parsed down so specifically, a lot of things that Fred would order would have multiple purposes, and you'd be, you know, splitting it across accounts for no good reason, it wasn't helping us for accounting, it was just, you know, back in the day, somebody had wanted that detail, and those people are long gone, and we're still breaking it down that way. Now, if the board wants, we will have, so like, we have salt and overtime are two biggest snow removal expenses, they are in separate accounts, they're in both liquid fuels and general fund, we can pull that together, you know, if there's a big storm, and the board wants to know how much we spent on it, Melinda can easily pull that information.
We had a tremendous amount of supply accounts in a lot of different departments, and, and more than, we had operating supplies and supplies within the same department, and when you're looking at that, and you're looking at what's going into it, for analysis purposes to see, you know, whether, whether you're spending too much or not, it didn't make any sense, because over time, that's sort of what happens, you, you get a new project, and you want certain things split out, so you do it that way, that project is gone, you still have those accounts, you're still using it, and now a new project comes along, and you decide you want it broken out. We also have the ability, if we group something, to go back and pull out invoices and pull out, you know, wages or anything that were grouped differently, and let you know exactly what they were, because they're just not together in the, the accounts now, I would have to do like detail on it a different way.
The ones where these are eliminated? They just go away?
So, what you're looking at there are the departments, so when you look at the general fund, there was like an 0140140 that was wages, and then that was the board of supervisors, and then there was an 01401 that was like the township manager and the assistant manager, and then there's like finance or whatever, but that wasn't serving any purpose, so when you look at the general fund, everything will still be in the general fund, and we'll have each fund, and, and you'll see the departments, and you'll see the accounts, and it'll just make a little bit more sense. Some of the breakouts, we had accounts that were holding like $500, which really didn't help the situation.
The emergency management department on, it's just.
Right, so, not the fund, those are departments, this is all just the general fund, right. No, you'll still see that account in there, and it's separated, it's just, we don't have it as a complete separate department, because if you have a separate department and you have three accounts, do you see what I'm saying, whereas they could be folded in with other accounts, you don't have to break it out with this detail.
And the 01415, where you have emergency management, that should have a pink highlight on it.
Oh, yeah. I thought it did.
News to you, John, there's nothing in the budget for emergency management.
So, everything that's highlighted in pink has gone in together into the.
On the right-hand side, you'll see it's in, so, in other words, if there were supplies that were listed in 01404 law or in the legislative, now you're going to have a supply account, and it's going to have it for the executive, the legislative, and the law, and you'll have supplies in there. Communication is that way for all of our cell phones and our landlines and things like that, we had them broken out all, like, you don't need a communication line in every single one of those departments.
It makes sense what you're saying, I'm just not understanding why you would put law, conservation, and natural resources, insurance, all together, is that the intent?
So, I think you're getting, because you're only looking at departments here, I think it's, it's more confusing, so if you saw the accounts fully with the last three digits that were after them, so in finance, you have finance wages, finance communication, finance technology, those types of things, and that makes sense, because you want to look at what your finance department is doing, but we had it separate for the board of supervisors, and separate for the township manager and the assistant township manager, whereas that could be together, we don't need a separate technology, or separate communication, or a separate supplies account for those two departments, so they're still in the general fund with that account number, it's just they're grouped together.
So, and, so for example, law should be an account in a department, not a department by itself, there were two accounts in the law department, there was solicitor expenses, and then a separate account and line item just for our general code expenses, so our, you know, our ordinances are codified into general code, so it got its very own account, so there's no need for that, so law, the account is just moving into the executive budget, and general code is joining the rest of the contracted services, services in executive, which is really administration, which we could probably rename administration.
Yeah.
Come to think of it. Similarly, so conservation and natural resources, you, you actually more, pretty much had eliminated that department, it had one account in it, which was the money that was for EAC events, excluding the tree giveaway, and last year, the board decided to move that into the legislative department and have one account for all the boards and commission events. So, we still have that as a separate line item, it's just moving into the executive department. I, I think overall, it'll make the budget easier for you all to see where we're spending our money, it'll also make it easier when we do summaries of, you know, categories of expenses.
I think when you see the budget with it now more succinct like this, you're going to look at it and see, you can still see exactly what you want to see, and I think it'll be easier in the flow of it, and you'll understand it better, it'll just make more sense the way it's grouped. It was broken down for, for not a purpose anymore, and it was just too difficult to sort of maneuver around, it didn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you for putting this together, trying to simplify. It's extremely helpful for us. Any questions?
But, so is this, this page is now your updated.
This is a draft of an estimate, but this now is what the public works would be like, so in other words, instead of going to all the different departments to pull everything together for public works, because 430 used to really just be highway and roads, now public works is in here, so you can see the department as whole by looking at this group of accounts.
Gotcha.
Technology is a new account that we developed this year, just to hold things, because technology is becoming so large, for things like the laptops and the software and things like that, because I think that you might want to see what that is, the cost and the expense amount. If you remember also, we had like meetings and conferences, and then we had another account for dues, okay? So, training dues and subscriptions can all kind of be put together, that's kind of combining three accounts, and now we're combining the departments, because there's not a lot of money that's spent in there, and you kind of know everything that's in there, and it's related, and you can pull it out if you want to see the detail, but I think it just makes more sense to pull it together.
So, the, the budget that's below the consolidation of the, is that an example of what we're going to get, or this is the public works budget, and we should discuss it now?
No, you should not discuss it now. I wanted to bring you out a little snippet, because if you look at the budget from last year for public works, you had many different departments, so I couldn't just pull out 01430, because it was kind of all over the place, pages, it was pages. And now you can look at it and be like, oh, public works technology, this is what it is, this, do you see what I'm saying? This is the repairs and maintenance for public works, and the clothing and uniforms for public works, as opposed to going into all the different departments, it's going to make more sense to you, and I think you can analyze it better.
When will we actually? I think in November, that's, we'll get the opportunity to review, actually. You'll see the capital budget.
Yes, okay, yeah, again, you'll see the capital budget next, because we're doing it in pieces, and that's larger, and then the, the next time, you'll see the entire budget, yes, and the finance committee tomorrow is seeing the budget, so, let you know what we have so far, so they'll be seeing it in the more succinct form or whatnot, and, and I think they'll be able to understand it and explain it.
During this. But those seem to be.
Yeah.
Next up, we have a consideration. Looking at every category, second. Community and society principle. The offer of the advertisement of this at our meeting, included is a memo related to this ordinance. Also included, memo. Presentation of staff is to group ordinance by the amendment chapter ten eighty-four minutes for waste reduction, title ordinance of. Push in if you're.
Second.
Give her.
Aye.
Next is the consideration of the amendment, the agreement, community, which will revise the allocation process grant funding on the, on the, on the, PRC. PRC. I will.
I can give you a quick summary if you like. So, um, as I think you're aware, the township was recently awarded a grant from PennDOT's Green Light Go program to do traffic signal equipment upgrades at two intersections on Welsh Road, uh, one being Evans Road and the other being, um, the Darden Drive, Gwynn Crossing access. Um, the township was awarded, um, three hundred and twenty four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And there's a twenty percent, uh, local match, which is eighty one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. So as we've discussed signal projects in the past, the township is, um, one hundred percent responsible for owning and maintaining these traffic signals. So you're being able to take advantage of PennDOT's grant program to cover eighty percent of the costs um, for upgrading, um, these intersections. The, the general scope of work is to, um, replace the existing loop detection with video detection and radar detection at each of the intersections, um, which will provide better operation and also be easier, uh, for long-term maintenance compared to the loop detectors. Replacing, uh, communication equipment. It's part of a system, um, in the lower Gwynnead Montgomeryville area. And the approved communication equipment allow the intersections to communicate better with the others in the system. And the other, um, larger item is to control, is to replace the controller units, um, at each of the intersections. So, um, our proposal, um, is for design and permitting, putting the project out to bid for construction and then services, um, during construction, um, after the project, um, is awarded. So, um, how the reimbursement works for the grant, um, our fees will count towards the local match um, that the township is obligated for. And then, um, the eighty percent, the township will request that reimbursement during construction. Correct. Um, we're estimating that the design and permitting.
I saw that the forty six weeks for the.
For the initial submission.
The plan and bids and the before we, I guess I was saying when we then started.
Um, we'll get, we'll get started as soon as you authorize us. In total, we expect the design and permitting will take about nine to twelve months. Um, we'll make the initial submission approximately four to six month, four to six weeks after we get authorization. But the entire PennDOT process, we estimate it'll take nine to twelve months. Um, and then, um, you know, construction after that, we'll have a better idea of, you know, what the duration of construction will be once we get the project fully designed.
Question from the board. Need to make a motion, um, approval of the proposal from, um, FOMIS related to the traffic signals on Welsh Road and Evanston and Darden Drive in the amount of forty one thousand. Out of pocket expense is, uh.
Thank you.
Next up, I think we have consideration of a, um, award, well, that has been that came in related to the signal porter placement of Bethlehem Pike and Dager Road. There are two bids.
Correct. Sure, the, the project, um, we came before you in August to get authorization to put this out to bed. It's to replace two signal poles at the intersection of Bethlehem Pike and Dager Road. And the, we also replaced the signal heads, um, that are currently on those poles. So we advertised it, um, and the two bids came back with the low bid being from Armor and Sons Electric in the amount of sixty seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And we're recommending that you approve that bid.
I'd like, um, approve the bid request for Armor and Sons in the amount of sixty seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
Thank you. And just for timing on that project, it will take several months for the new poles to come in, uh, once they're ordered by Armor. Um, so it will take a few months before you actually see, um, the work constructed out there.
Is like a springtime activity or just?
Um, this would be spring, summer timeframe. We'll have, yeah. So we'll, we'll have a better estimate once they place the order and start to track the order. Okay.
Next, um, we have included in our board packet and memo, and we're, as far as project matters, related to the income, um, bill and work authorization. Memo goes in that around, um, property, they were going to counter formally over. Yes. Um, and the acquisition and the. Acting property. Evidence in the memo, um, all of it is now completed. For Jack report. That report's being finalized and submitted. They made a certain amount of protections. Uh, they made. Um, again, this acquisition of this land goes back to nineteen ninety nine. It was forged, um, however, since it had been completed, um, once it is reviewed by DEP, approved, the county will prepare and forward and, um, staff has made a recommendation that we. Overrevelation of this group of work and the additional expense we're completing.
Is this the last bit of work on this project? So we pay this bill, we're done.
This final report, so we're going to assume this is the last kind of the perfect, last we're going to have a memo for this?
Yeah, it's been going on for so many months and years.
Should it be noted though, that in the event that the department of DEP gives us additional tasks to complete, then we'll have to write the script again and complete those tasks. Is that accurate?
Yes, we are at the mercy of DEP.
So as of what we're advised now, we believe.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Hopefully it should be the end. We're like at the end of the end, but we, we don't control all of it, so.
Any additional questions? We now need to make a motion to approve everybody's script and. All those who think. Next up, we have, um, consideration of the updated police policy.
So what we have here is, um, the police have a general order for hiring process. And in your ordinances, we have a hiring process for hiring police officers also. The two don't seem to match frequently. We are constantly updating our hiring, in-house hiring policy. And a lot of those are due to accreditation standards. Most recent one I can give you is we're required now to have a recruitment that is, will be, will be, we will recruit more diverse candidates. That is not located in the ordinance. It's much easier for us to update our policy than to update an ordinance. So for the past year, at least, we've been working with, um, our labor attorney, going back and forth, taking what we needed out of the ordinance and putting it and merging it with our, uh, hiring policy, in-house hiring policy. What we propose to do is, what you're going to see is eliminate the ordinance. We'll have a hiring policy. Any, you'll approve that hiring policy and any changes that we make would come to you. So you'll, you'll understand what changes we will be making. Um, if there are no changes, the policy will just stay in effect. If we need to make changes, we will, um, advise you of that, the changes that need to be made. So it's, it's really cleaning up, um, two separate policies and making them one.
And going forward, we'll approve any policy changes?
Correct. The, the policy you see tonight is going to be the policy for right now. The accreditation just changed three months ago, so they're all in there. They meet yearly, um, not, and they don't change the hiring practices every year. But if something does come about, maybe in-house, we want to change something.
Would they approve, um, like the changes? Are they approved at a public meeting or because it's personnel that? Like I guess is it something that will be?
Not individual personnel, personnel in the general. I imagine.
I mean, the only thing I'm thinking.
Absolutely.
Okay. Because the benefit of the ordinance, right, is that like it's open to the public. But if we're still having the discussion during a public meeting.
Good, because I didn't have an answer for your question.
If you, if you've been part of recommendations, would it? That reflected in the ordinance and.
Yes, yeah. We're going to mimic civil service pretty much. Some of the other things that were cleaned up were rejection of a candidate. Used to be at the discretion of the township manager. That now came back to the police chief that, for rejection of a candidate. Uh, there was a lot of cleaning up is what we did. As you're aware, the latest addendum to the hiring ordinance was Act fifty seven or fifty nine? Fifty seven? So we included all that in our hiring policy. It's, it's. Yes, well, so that, um, we, we are very unique here in that, you know, the scoring is pretty general that you can get. You don't necessarily need to be in the high nineties in the written test to maybe be a successful candidate. There's more that we're looking for in backgrounds and other skills that people have that they may not be a test taker. So, uh, whereas in civil service, you won't see that. They're going to take the top ten scores and that's it. We're, we're going to look at a more well-rounded candidate um, and try and get the best possible candidate for our department.
Oh, um, when you say in here that you're going to go with the top forty individuals and interview them, is that our department or is that the consortium?
That's us.
You're, you're going to interview forty people?
Yes.
Wow.
We, we will interview forty people on our own. It won't be in front of, that, that's one step of the process. We're going to do an informal interview of the top forty scores.
Okay.
A lot of them are done with Zoom. And then the final interview, the, the, if you want to call it the formal interview, I believe it's the top fifteen is what it says. Uh, that is where the outside community, um, you know, the committee would be, see the top fifteen. Seeing forty people is just impossible for the final stage of that.
Right. I, I have a question about the polygraph examination.
Yep.
Um, what, what is that? What is the purpose of that?
Well, after we give somebody a conditional offer, say we want to hire somebody. We have officer A and we want to hire him. We will give them a conditional offer based on, then we will do a few more tests. We'll do a psychological, we'll do, um, a physical, medical physical, and we'll do a polygraph test. And we use a former county detective. Um, we've used them for other positions here at the township. They'll, it's a lie detector. They're going to be brought in, hooked up. Are you telling us the truth in everything you said to us?
So I thought, Neil, I thought polygraph tests were not.
They're not admissible in court. They're not, they're not, they're not admissible in court. We can use them to judge the, uh, honesty of a candidate. And we failed quite a few people because they failed their polygraph. Not, they haven't failed their polygraph by test. They failed their polygraph in telling us before the polygraph, I've lied to you. And they'll tell us how they've lied in the past, maybe in their application. What you'll see in there is a personal data questionnaire. We'll ask a lot of questions about their life history and a lot of candidates will not tell us the truth. So we want to know if they're telling us the truth.
Yeah, I get it, but, um, so you're saying when they know they're going to get the polygraph test, then they come clean?
Usually about ten minutes before the test. And we have, and Tassie, what you'll see, you know, we do this consortium with a lot of people, a lot of other municipalities, and you'll see, I wonder why they didn't apply to this department. It's because they don't give a polygraph. It's standard in hiring police officers. Almost everybody gives a polygraph. Almost everybody.
Okay.
They, the candidates expect it. They expect to receive a polygraph.
Yeah, I, my feeling, just, uh, not being a police officer, is that polygraph examinations are not, um, ironclad. But if, just the threat of being under a polygraph makes somebody.
And that's usually what happens.
Okay.
It's usually the fear of, I'm going to fail. So I better just tell them the truth upfront.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Anything else you want to expand on?
No.
The, that, so the first thing that we're going to do this is, um, consideration of the updated police department policy, which is general order one point five, subject to hiring and training. Make a motion to review general order one point five, is that correct?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, next up is a consideration, consideration, um, to advertise the ordinance amendments, the leading section, two forty four oh one, which has been hiring, two forty four oh three background, after two forty four. And again, which is, that's now a bucket of policy. This would delete them from the local and township code, but what the town question is. All right. Any questions?
Yes, the only question I have is, do we, is there, obviously this board will have knowledge of it. You as the chief will have knowledge of it. But is there somewhere that it's codified that the, any changes to the hiring practices have to be approved by the board?
It's not codified, um, you'd be taking it out of the code. So whether it's Paul or, you know, eventually Paul's successor as chief, whoever's looking at that, it's written very, right at the very beginning of the policy. So anybody looking at the policy is going to see it needs to be approved by the board. So any changes they're making, if it's not approved by the board, just procedurally, you're making that policy susceptible to. So any changes they're making, if it's not approved by the board, just procedurally, you're making that policy susceptible to challenge. And any chief worth their salt is going to know they need to have a solid hiring process. So I can't even imagine a chief who you would have here who would want to take that risk to not have, to try to be, you know, changing the, the policy. You have bigger problems with your chief if your chief is doing that and not bringing you the, the hiring cost.
We plan to post this policy also. We do have several of our policies that people want to read that are concerned. We'll add this one too, so people will know what our policy is.
That, that was my next question. Will this be publicus, publicly available?
Yes.
We can have it on the.
Yes, we'll, we'll put it right on, right on our website.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not concerned about the chief, this chief, future chiefs. I'm more concerned that the public has comfort to know that we're approving these higher.
Right. I understand. Yep. The one you're looking for, I think is in one B.
New.
But it's not, I'm sorry, I'm looking at general. In general order one point five.
Three from one part?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's seventy three of them, the list of the. There's two or three that we added that's different from Act fifty seven.
There's one.
Yeah. There's two or three.
Is, and that are in the ordinance right now?
It should be.
There was only one in the, when we talked about it, there was only one in the ordinance that wasn't in Act fifty seven. Everything from Act fifty seven was in the earlier version of the policy. Unless we just missed.
So this will be in the policy.
So it, and this, those lists are in the hiring. They're in the background investigation section, right? Is that, we're talking about the same thing?
What would be.
Yes.
But again, because the policy is much easier for us.
We could, we could update this in the next meeting. Right. That, and that's the goal, to make it easier.
So again, if those three sections that I named, two forty four oh one, two forty four oh three, two forty four, that would be. Any questions from the public? We now need to make a motion to consider, to advertise the ordinance amendment needing to be identified from three four oh one, two forty three and two forty. Of the lower by township code to the board. Please carry on.
Okay.
All those in favor? We did a whole packet, was the in which report or are there any questions? You now like me to version two. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, the three two one minutes of ours in two thousand. For meeting, other. Question would be general. Thank you for the motion to approve the minute.
I believe.
Aye.
Next up is supervisor ladies on the court there included in the word. They brought the supervisor comments, Tessie.
Uh, no comments.
Just thank the staff for everything they're doing. Just a lot of hard work I've seen going on. So thank you.
I'd echo Jimmy's comments. Thank you.
And also the staff for all that they've done, all of the that are continuing to be doing to prepare and help with the budget. Ormisses are up to date. And thank the festival, yesterday in Bridge opening, all those involved and all those that came to witness. This is so grateful. There was a new program data.
My daughter uses it often. She actually is very thankful for it.
So thank you for all those that made that possible.
And the tree giveaway was Saturday and very successful.
Would you say?
Tree giveaway was Saturday and.
Yes. And thank you to all of the volunteers for the EAC came out on that Sunday morning and attributed trees to all. President. I can, public in favor?
Those are getting killed.